Testing, testing.
Testing, one, two.
No, no, not, no, hi, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say we want to allow another ten minutes or so just to see if other people will come. I know traffic was heavy where I came from. So if you're, please be patient. And I'm here this evening with the chairman of the NIS, Lesley Haynes, on my left, the CEO of the NIS, Kim Tudor, over on the other side of the table, and the independent actuary Derek Osborne, whose firm authored this report. So I'll say a couple of things that are housekeeping really from the top. We have two hours allocated, two hours plus ten minutes because we started a bit late. We would ask that when the time comes for questions, that you are succinct as possible so we can get through as many as possible. Outside of that, we really are here to not only inform but to learn and understand the concerns and ideas that the public has. So without further ado, I'm going to hand over to Mr. Haynes to make a few opening remarks. And then I think we'll go straight into, straight into the presentation by Derek. So that you can, you can hear the key messages as, as he perceives them out of that report. Thank you. Lesley?
Thanks, Rodden. Well firstly, good evening all. It's a pleasure to be here. And as Rodden said, this evening, as I understand, the purpose of us being here this evening is for firstly, the actuary, Mr. Derek Osborne, who's all the way from the Bahamas. And he's been our actuary for how many years, Derek? About twenty, twenty years. So he knows the inside workings of the NIS. We are all stakeholders in the NIS. So he's going to inform you basically of the key points in his actuarial report and the need for action. And the, and having done that, then we would like to hear from all present what the suggestions are, the way to go forward. In other words, I think Derek will tell you that every solution for national insurance schemes is peculiar to the country itself. So that there are different solutions and we have to choose one that's appropriate for us. For instance, and, and when I say us, it's because we are all stakeholders, stakeholders in the national insurance scheme. I have been on the board since 2018. I've learnt a little bit about national insurance. And one of the things that I've learnt is that the national insurance is responsible or really is one of the engines of growth of the economy. For instance, yes, what paper was it that I should saw the headlines? Too much, the NIS has too much investments with government. That may be true. And for the last, what, even in the last actuarial report, Derek, your, Derek has always said to us that we need to, what's the word, diversify, reduce our investments in government paper, move to other places. We, we as a board, we have been looking at that for a long time, for fair time. The only, the only problem with that is that for the last two years from March 2020, as we were getting things together, we were hit with Covid. As a result of Covid, the national insurance scheme, I would, I think it's fair to say that we put over $200 million into the economy. And as a member of the board, the only, the only difference between a member of the board and chairman is the chairman has to do all the hard work to arrange meetings and set the agenda and that type of thing. But when I looked around during those two years, I really couldn't see the 200 million. When I go, when I pass someplace, you know, I am looking for, how did we spend 200 million in the last two years with Covid? And my answer is that the 200 million was spent keeping Barbados afloat. And that is where we are. So that, I say that to say that we have considered as a board a number of items, but Covid was our priority in the last two years. I remember when Covid hit, we, we worked and the, and the management team and the staff of the national insurance worked assiduously to ensure that we did something called advance, the advanced payment solution. I don't know if you all remember that, what it was, was that rather, when you put in for your unemployment benefit, rather than wait the three months, we were paying you first and then working out the benefits after. So that, and then we went from step to step monitoring Covid and making sure that funds were there, etc. So we've been fairly busy over the last two years. Then the, now that we are, well, I would say recovering, yeah, I would say recovering now that Covid is almost behind us. It's not as serious as it was before, I think. Although the newspapers' reports still reports high numbers, but we are all here, we're sitting together, that type of thing. And Derek presented us with his report, the actuarial report. And we saw the report, and you all know what the report says, but Derek will give you a presentation. That report basically told us, look, we need to find a solution, if not in about 15 years' time. If we continue the way we are, we will not have a national insurance fund to continue with our, to continue with our social development and social security. And that is why essentially, we are here taking action early so that we can chart a new course. The, the, we are not the only national insurance scheme in this position. Derek can give you the, the positions of certain national insurance schemes throughout the region. And we, but we are, we are among the few that are charting this new course as early as possible. It's, it's very simple. You're going to meeting, you leave home early, you have a flat tire, you see a, uh, there's an accident on in Barbados where we have accidents on Highway 2A or what they call the coast road, Highway 1A. You, you have to change course. And that is why, why we are here, because we have to change course. And we have, the sooner we change course, the better it is for all of us. And that is why we're here, looking forward to, to suggestions and hearing what you all have to say. So that at the end of the day, please rest assured that all comments and suggestions made here, made at the other town hall meetings that are, that are to take place later this week on Wednesday and Thursday. Wednesday, we are going to Alexandra School in St. Peter. I'd be home early because I live in St. Peter. And on Thursday, we're going to St. Philip. I already told the powers that be I need directions because I haven't been to St. Philip for years. So that, that is where we are. So I'll hand over now, we have, at the end of the day, we have our director from the national insurance here with us. But I'll hand over now, and she'll be available for questions together with Rodden and myself and Derek. And we'll handle, I'll hand over now to Derek, who will give us a short presentation. Is it Derek? So I'll leave that in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. It's, it's really good to be with you and to share with you, you know, important things about your national insurance scheme. And to keep things running smoothly, many of you may have seen some of what we're going to share today. But just, you know, for repetition, we're going to go through a similar slide deck again. I'll be brief for this time, and we're going to add the options that we can discuss as we, as we consider changes for the NIS. So I think we all know and appreciate what NIS does or supposed to do for Barbados. As the chairman mentioned, I mean, that really was highlighted during Covid with the unemployment fund. But a simple definition we like to use for why NIS schemes exist across the region and essentially most countries in the world is a comprehensive system of social protection that reflects, in this case, Barbados value system. It has to make sense for Barbados. It should respond to change in economic, socioeconomic conditions, so social, economic, demographic. And because NIS delivers a service to its customers, it should be satisfying customer needs, right? So comprehensive means everybody, right? And in this case, income replacement benefits. So it should cover income replacement benefits for any cause of loss of income. It should cover everybody in the population. It should represent Barbados value system. It should respond to changing conditions and provide great customer service. And of course, as a benefit system, people always want more, but we have to balance more with cost. And so those two words, adequate and affordable, need to go hand in hand, even though on the surface, they oppose each other. And the sustainable word is looking out for children and grandchildren. So we have to find a way to provide benefits that are adequate, that a system still be affordable to those who are paying the contributions, and our children to come are going to be able to afford the system and get a reasonable benefit. On the right-hand side, we talk about what we're trying to avoid. There are certain things we're trying to avoid. And the number one is the fund being exhausted. Most of you have heard by now that if nothing is done, the fund will be exhausted. But the key thing is if nothing is done. The second thing we want to avoid is, as I said a while ago, children and grandchildren paying a lot more to get a lot less than what's available today. And thirdly, we want to avoid many older people not having a pension in old age. And right now, there's only one in eight self-employed people who contribute, which means that if that continues until they get old, most of the people who are self-employed today won't have a reliable source of income in old age. And they'll depend on their children, the neighborhood, and then eventually the state, which is taxpayers, to help them make ends meet. So most of you may remember that, what, 18 years ago, some major reforms were done to the NIS. In short, the contribution rate was increased, the pension age was increased, but the benefits were reduced slightly. Since then, and the projections were made, hopefully, NIS would have been sustainable for the medium term. But since then, we've had some unfortunate outcomes. The population is now declining. We actually have more deaths than we have births since 2017. So the number of babies being born is less than the number of people who are dying. The number of employed persons in the population has gradually come down over the last 15 years. The economy has been actually, growth has been more negative than it has been positive. As we see here from these two charts on the left, GDP growth has been negative in nine out of the last 13 years. The big negative is Covid, but we all know why. On the right-hand side, we see that the, the red line, which is the number of employed persons, has, is coming down from where it was back in 2007 and 2011. We see the yellow line, which is NIS contributors, which is now just over 100,000 from nearly 130,000 15 years ago, right? So essentially, the economy is, is not growing fast. The number of employed persons is going down, and the number of NIS contributors is going down. And NIS depends on contributors and a working economy to make sure that it functions and is sustainable. Four years ago, the, the government decided to restructure some of government's debt. And by so doing, it reduces interest obligations every year, which hopefully would have translated to more money going into real investments into the economy and helping to boost economic circumstances to make ends meet. Yes, NIS lost a billion dollars in assets, but from an economic standpoint, and I won't spend too much time on this right now, is that taxpayers who fund governments' taxes are the same group who pay NIS contributions. So to the extent that NIS lost a billion dollars, future taxpayers also are off the hook for a billion dollars. So while NIS lost a billion dollars, there's a net zero sum for all of Barbados. And the hope is that by, by allowing the economy to grow and be stronger, NIS could possibly be stronger. It's impossible to have a strong NIS in a weak Barbados. Just impossible. As we all know, Covid-19 hit us two years ago, and the main effect for the national insurance fund was lower employment. So contribution income was down, but benefit income was pretty much as expected. I mentioned a while ago, self-employed persons, only one in eight contribute, which is something we really have to work on. And then the last two buttons here talk about administrative challenges the NIS has in terms of service delivery. We've heard many complaints about service being slow. And also, we are aware that annual reports and statements that are audited are now over 10 years late. And and so that's some system challenges that NIS has to work through and hopefully can improve on in the short term. So the future looks, as presented on the screen, from a population standpoint, what we forecast is that every single year going forward, the population will decrease. I mentioned a while ago, births are less than deaths. We still believe there's migration going out, net out. And so what we have projected is a reducing number of children, which is the blue, a reducing number of workers, which is the yellow, working age population, but an increasing number of pensioners. And NIS's benefit expenditure, 73% goes towards old age pensions. So you could imagine that if you have a growing population of pensioners for your most expensive benefit, then there's going to be a lot of pressure on the National Insurance Fund going forward. And that pressure leads to a projection now that if nothing is done, the fund will be depleted in 2034 to 2041. We did a range, several scenarios, better economic times, worse economic times. So it could be 12 years from now or 19 years from now or somewhere around that period. And the biggest challenge is that even though the fund could be depleted, it doesn't mean there's no more NIS. Because NIS can still collect contributions from the people who are working and employers for whom they work. The challenge is the gap between what's coming in and what's going out. So on the right side, you see a chart with two lines. The red line is the contribution rate, now average 18%. If that remains unchanged, then the costs are going to keep increasing. That's the green line, about 24% today to about 30% in the mid 2030s. So the gap today is about 6% of wages. So we're collecting 18, but paying out 24. That gap in 15 years' time is going to be around 12% to 13% of contributions, which is significant. And that significant size of the gap is probably better depicted here on this colorful chart, where where the blue at the bottom is contribution income, about just over $600 million today per annum. The top line, which is the dark line on top, is expenditure. So while we are collecting $800 million, the expenditure is about $800 million, a gap of about $200 million per year. And this has increased over the last over the last few years, not just because of COVID. In the last few years, and as shown on the graph, the yellow section is investment income, which is the money that is a return on the nearly $4 billion that's invested in various securities. All of that is going towards paying pensions today. And the green, which is the selling of assets. So because the blue plus the yellow weren't enough to meet total expenditure, assets had to be liquidated early to help pay benefits. And that's the green. Now, if you think about your own home finances, if you have savings and you start calling on those savings and, you know, dipping into those wherever you have them, and you keep doing that year after year after year, there'll eventually be nothing left. And the projection here is that in the mid 2030s, if there's nothing left, the orange or the red is a gap that needs to be filled. And that's about $700 million at the very beginning. So from $200 million today to $700 million 13, 14 years from now, that's a huge gap to fill. And so the goal of the reforms would be to increase the blue and reduce that top expenditure line. I think you can all agree with me, based on what you've just seen, that the National Insurance Fund in its current state is not sustainable at the current contribution rate, average 18%, and the benefits that are now offered under that fund. And the question is, what could really cause this fund to be depleted so quickly? Right? It's $4 billion, just about 3.9. You know, that's only 12, 15 years away. What could really cause that? And the first point is demographics, over which most of us have no control over. As we see here, back when pension reform was done 18 years ago, there were 3.6 contributors for everyone pensioning. There's 3.6 people putting in for everyone taken out. That number today is about 2.4, maybe even 2.3 as we speak in 2022. And we project further declines to 1.8 in 2040 and 1.7. And this is consistent with family sizes. As we know, in a long time, people had five, six children, then it became three and four children. Now it's one, two, and in many cases, no children. And if you think about trying to support mommy and daddy who have no pension income, it's much more easy when you have six children or five siblings, probably better, than when you have no siblings and it's only you to take care of your parents, right? And the same thing for governments' taxes and the same thing for NIS with contributions. We also have no guidelines. So even though the actuary came in every three years and did projections, gave a report, made some recommendations, there was no need, there was no requirement for the government of the day to act or do things differently. And so hopefully, when we're done the dialogue in the next few months, next few weeks, we can have some guidelines that the next actuary coming in will have, and then the government will have to act if the benchmarks that we set are not met. And the third, and perhaps just as important, cause for the fund to possibly be depleted in 15 years' time is kicking the can down the road, right? If we do nothing and just wait until D-Day comes, D-Day will come and catch us. And so what we have in this case is the government deciding not to kick the can down the road and to start dialogue early. We believe there are four ingredients that are going to allow the National Insurance Fund to be sustainable for the long term, ensuring that children and grandchildren can get their pension when it's their turn to get. The first one is the economy. As I said earlier, we cannot have a strong NIS in a weak Barbados economy. The two just don't go hand in hand because NIS depends on contributors, earning wages, employers who are able to afford the contributions to pay into the NIS. So what we really want is, if it's a big economy, whether from migration, whether from, you know, having more babies, whether it be people working harder, working smarter, Barbadians coming back home and investing, attracting foreign investment and growing the country, that would be the first ingredient we believe for success. The second one is design. NIS was celebrating 55 years two months ago in early June. And the NIS today looks very much like it did 55 years ago. And so however, life has changed. You know, the gig economy has taken over. A lot of people are now working from home on their laptops and their pajamas. And so we have to find a way to to catch vendors and plumbers and carpenters, lawyers, doctors, whoever they are, working on an informal basis to pay contributions and contribute to the well-being of the fund and the state in general. And by all programs, we mean even the welfare ones from government and the ones from NIS, so that all the programs we have to support incomes are going to be working like a puzzle. They fit together, no overlaps and no gaps. But having all said all of that, we need to find a balance between the adequacy of benefits, the affordability of contributions and long-term sustainability. In 2022, you know, we know that systems have done, are able to do a lot more now than they were 10, 15 years ago. And so NIS and the government need to find a way to improve their system so that they be effective and efficient. They all speak to one another, you know, and NIS knows what's happening on licensing and licensing on NIS. And so we can find a way to ensure that there's better compliance and and better service delivery at all points along the way. And finally, some people say good governance. I like to say honest and responsible government. And this is not only the Prime Minister, not only Cabinet, but all levels of leadership in in the country and in this case, NIS, right? You know, leadership is tough, right? And every now and again, things come at you and you have to decide what to do. And so being honest and responsible means being proactive. It means studying the options and taking those tough decisions in advance of crisis coming along. As the Prime Minister said last week, we are not in crisis. We don't want to get there. And so I think the the government has shown that in this case, they've been honest and responsible. They wish sharing the full story with the population in a responsible way. And and through consultation, the hope is that we can find a Barbados solution to this Barbados problem. So what are the options that we have to to look at? And, you know, in your own home finances, if you have a shortfall or believe you have a shortfall down the road, there's really only two things that you can do. You either have to get more money coming in or cut your spending. And the same goes for NIS. Increasing the contribution can come from a variety of ways. More contributors, so more workers, better compliance, more contributions coming in. We can create a contribution rate, which is now 18 and a quarter percent in the private sector. Higher investment earnings, so there's money invested still, most of it in government debt. Hopefully, we can try and find a way to get higher investment earnings. And if push comes to shove and there's a need for additional funds to meet that gap I showed earlier, government has to inject some money into the fund. But again, money coming from government comes from you as taxpayers. So whether you call it NIS in the right pocket, there you go, or taxes in the left pocket, it's still coming from you. On the expenditure side, we can look at finding a way to reduce the average new pension, right? So if you think about, we won't be supporting, like, reducing life expectancy, killing everybody who's 85 and over, we won't be talking about that. What we can do is look at the new pension amount that people get and reducing that slightly so that going forward, we can reduce long-term costs. And there's several ways that we can do that. And we can do a different structure. As I said, 55 years old, the structure may not work as well as it did 55 years ago. Look at a new structure. We could look at a different pillar. So for example, there are options around the world where there's a flat pension payable to everybody who is old. And that's designed to eliminate poverty to a certain extent. And above that, you can have an NIS that provides a smaller benefit that's based on the contributions you've made and the incomes that you have. We can target benefits to higher income, to lower income people versus higher income people. And we can do a more defined contribution approach where you get back and what you get back is linked to exactly what you put in, right? So we have options. But at the end of the day, the average new pension needs to be smaller if we want to sustain the pension. The second option is to start pensions later. 60 is the first age for reduced pension. 67 is the age for a full pension. We possibly could start either 60 and move to 62, 65, or maybe move 67 to 68, 69, 70, right? All these are options, right? And as the chairman said, you know, nothing is is off the table and everything's up for discussion as we go forward. And we look forward to hearing from you in the next few minutes. The last point is smaller cost of living adjustments. As you all know, those of you who get pensions, every January or most Januaries, there's an adjustment to your pension. It's small, but inflation has been relatively low in the last few years before this year. And 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 the law says that every January it should be increased. It was not done during COVID and '21 or '22. We're waiting for the wage index to be produced. That's one of the inputs into the formula. But that could be looked at as a way of reducing long-term costs and having pensioners bear a little bit of the burden of keeping the system afloat. And just to be more specific, as I mentioned some of them already, in terms of the options for reform, we can look at making the increase in the first age from 60 to something else. The pensionable age where there's no more reduction from 67 to something a little bit higher. Change of formula right now, it's quite generous right now because after 20 years of contributions, it's 40% of your final five-year average wages. The 20% that's available after that is earned after 16 years. So it's very, very generous to short service for those with 20 years of contributions. And that could be abused, right? It's also not good for people who, as migrants, come into Barbados, who after 25 years of contribution or 20 years of contributions, they get a pretty good benefit. And so we have to look at that and see after 50, whether after 55 years, there's still a need for such generosity in the early years of contributions. So that would mean taking longer to get to 60%. We could also reduce to 60% to 55% or 50% maximum. So for the young person starting out now, they would know that their maximum replacement rate is maybe 50%. And they then now need to find other sources of income, whether it be through the employer pension plan or through their own savings to top up to what they think they need to live comfortably in the old age. The one thing we are going to look at very closely as well is a career-based earnings pension. So in the US, Canada and most of the OECD countries, their pensions are based on what we call career earnings. So it looks at earnings from day one, when you started working, to day last, when you stop working. And then we average, we index them and average them over the career. So it gives you really a true flavor of what you've contributed and what you've earned. Right now, it's heavily weighted to short service, as I said, and final wages at the end. And the final point is is the multi-pillar system, which I mentioned earlier. So I'm going to wrap up now, but at the end of the day, and through consultation for the next few weeks, the the idea is to look at everything that's on the table, right? Develops that are priorities and beliefs that we really want to save our way NIS. We believe that, you know, we should not overly burden generations to come. Whether we believe that the fund should be invested locally overseas, whether whether we believe that 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 the NIS needs to be just one component of a multi-pillar approach. And we're going to ask you, the population, to decide on what's important to you as Barbadians, what's important to you to ensure that the fund is sustained. And hopefully, you know, when we come up with a Barbados solution, it'll be acceptable to most. And so thank you for your attention and I'll pass over to Rodan Adams.
Thanks. Thank you, Derek. Just before we open the floor to questions, there are a few, a few things in Derek's presentation I want to to highlight. So the the first one is this, is that as things stand today, the fund is very strong. It's almost, it's almost $4 billion worth of assets sitting in there. And that is equal to the equivalent of five years' current spending on benefits expenditure. That is to say, if everything stayed as it was, that fund could pay another five years' worth of benefits. But things are not going to stay as they are. And this is a very important point I want to highlight from from Mr. Osborne's presentation. And I'm going to put three questions to you that will explain this. So the first one concerns life expectancy. Does anyone know how long a child who was born today, a Barbadian child born today, can expect to live? What his life expectancy is born today? Okay, there there's a small margin of error between men and men and women, a couple of years. What was that? Well, you're spoiling my presentation, you know? But it's about 80. Now, do you know the same life expectancy number when this scheme was conceived, for lack of a better word, birthed in 1967? A child born in 1967, what age could they have expected to live to? That's very close. I heard 65. It's a little under 68, about 67 and a half. What does this mean? This means that over time, as people live longer, they're drawing their benefits for a lot longer than the architects of this scheme thought they would draw the benefits for. And those benefits are indexed, so they're not going to go down. Their fix is inexorable. As retirees expand, which is what is happening, the cost of those benefits expands. So here's the second question. Does anybody know what the average number of children a woman today in childbearing age, say, 25, actually has? How many children do women today tend to have? A little more than one and a half. It's about 1.7. Now, nobody has 0.7 of a child, but it's the average, so it's under two. Now, do you know in 1967, again, when this scheme was designed, what the designers were looking at in terms of the average number of children that women had? Anybody? I couldn't hear a distinct answer, but it's a little under four. And if you go back in the 1950s, the number was six. So over time, the very, the population is shrinking. Over time, we've gone from six in the 50s to four, or a little under four in the 60s, to under two today. So again, what what does that mean? That means that there are fewer people entering our workforce. There are fewer people contributing because it is contributors who pay and finance the benefits of retirees. So on the one hand, we have this growing retiree population. And we should rejoice that the life expectancy age has gone up, but there's a price to progress. And on the other hand, we have a shrinking workforce. And I think 2017, Derek can confirm, was the first year that we think the population actually declined and natural decline happened in Barbados. So there's a shrinking pool of money to finance these retirees. But this is not the most important point. The most important point concerns the economy. Now, Derek has a slide in there. There was a bar chart that showed the average growth of the economy every year since about 2006, I think it was. Now, even if we drop that outlier in 2020, if you look at that chart, have a have a guess at the average economic growth every year for the last 13 or 14 years. You think it's 2%, 3%? It's less than 1%. On average, every year, our economy, since the period portrayed in that chart, has gone about 0.7%. Now, in the 1960s, the average growth every single year from 1960 to 70 is about 6%. So look at this scheme. 1960s, very strong economic growth, high fertility rates and a growing, it meant a growing and expanding workforce. high fertility rates, and a growing, it meant a growing and expanding workforce, and a relatively low life expectancy compared to today. That scheme was not designed for the times we live in now. It's a structural problem that we're facing today. And by structural, somebody asked me, what do you mean structural? It's like any parent, at the start of every school year, has to buy shoes for their child. And they know, every year, the child has outgrown the shoes. Our benefits have outgrown our capacity to pay them. So when I say it's a structural problem, this is what I mean. And I want to put a number on it because I know many people in the press and in social media are focusing on operational issues. And these are serious things that we have to look at. But this structural problem, this report forecasts a deficit in twenty forty of about nine hundred and eight million dollars, right? Now, if we look at some of the key things we could do on the operational side, Derek mentioned the investment portfolio. I think that's been averaging historically about six percent. In recent times, four and a half, four point eight percent, which is respectable, I have to tell you, although people are saying in parts of the press that we can sweat a lot more money out of it. Let's say that we could double that, which is a very tall order. But let's say we could double that. That would be worth about a hundred and eighty million dollars, okay? So bear that in mind. And the second point, there's been a lot of talk, and we have to do it, about improving compliance, or as we were told to say by medical professional adherents. You know, apparently that encourages people to take their medicine rather than asking them to comply. But let's pretend for a moment we could regularize the entire informal sector. We know what that represents. The IDB had a study of about twenty sixteen that estimated that to be about one point five billion US dollars. So we can infer from what we know about contribution rates that that represents about thirty-three, thirty-four thousand people, and that would be worth about two hundred and twenty million dollars. So those are the two big things that we can easily identify where we can improve. But together, they don't equal half of the deficit that's coming from this structural problem. So this is the huge challenge that we have. So although it may be daunting looking at it that way, I would say that we have to bear in mind, many other countries have faced this issue. There are a lot of precedents. There are a lot of examples of what's been done and what can be done, what we can learn from. So I would say, don't be disheartened. We can collectively, we can fix this. It's been done in other places, and we can do it also. But it is important to look at the overall structural issue we've got, when we're coming up with ideas and when we're making our comments. So I want to stop there for the moment and invite the floor, open the floor, invite some questions now. Would you mind repeating your, someone might have to adjust that mic for you. Just repeating your name before you get into the questions.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sandra Squires. Right, okay, I'm not sure if I might have missed this information in the presentation, but I was wondering what is the percentage difference between the persons that are eligible to pay the contribution and those that are not paying it? Because my concern is that I don't think that we are aggressive enough going after persons who should be paying. So I think that's one area that we can look at or give more attention to. You want to respond to that?
One, I guess you're referring to both employers and self-employed persons.
Yes, please.
So I can't give you the exact percentage of employed persons. There are two issues with employed persons. One is that there's some employers who just don't pay. But sorry, don't deduct and don't pay. And there's some employers who do deduct and don't pay, right? And then some pay late. So we don't have the numbers. I think there's estimates that was on the, that Kim gave the other day for outstanding contributions. That's something we really have to look at and get a good number at to what percent of employers are up to date. And those not up to date, you know, how large is that deficit?
And the second area of concern, you say that about seventy-three percent are no benefit from the old age pension. Do you still, or sorry, the seventy-three percent are, sorry?
Of all benefits, seventy-three percent is old age.
Old age, right, good. I'm not sure, I got two different sources of information, but there was one person who informed me that you'd still do non-contributory pension, but it's not automatic, right? I'm wondering if you could look maybe at, up in that age. So in other words, rather than at sixty-seven, the non-contributors get a pension once they qualify. Why not take that number to maybe seventy, seventy-two and leave the contributors at the lower rate?
Right, I'll go first. So the non-con pension is... The non-con pension is mainly a state-financed pension. NIS stopped financing new benefits in nineteen ninety-eight. And anything that was increased above seventy-four dollars, something cents back then, is paid for the government. So there are few people left on the NIS role. There's only about seven million dollars a year for NIS this year.
Oh, okay.
And six forty-three million for old age pension. It's really, really small and going down. So the old age, non-contributory pension is really a government pension which is designed to ensure that people who do not have a contributory NIS have something on which to live on.
Okay, all right. I just was wondering if that would make a difference, because every little counts.
Every little counts, and I say it now. So NIS has other benefits as well. There's sickness, there's maternity, there's invalidity, there's survivors. And all of them look as they looked fifty-five years ago, right? And so we need to review each of them, determine what a true objective for each benefit is today in today's society, and determine whether we need to change. Now, a change could mean plus. For example, paternity benefit has been talked about for several years now. We have employers who are now paying a benefit to husbands and male spouses who, whose wife or girlfriend had a baby, right? But NIS does not have a benefit for that. And so the thinking is within the Ministry of Labor that if we have a paternity leave in the law, that employers must or should allow men to take leave, and NIS in turn has a benefit, right? So we have to look at maybe adding or improving some benefits at the same time, having some reducing costs, to have a net zero effect at least.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Nettor. I just want to say I don't, I'm not in agreement with what the lady, the first speaker said about increasing non-contributory pension. My mom was a lady, she never had to work, but she went about the welfare and those places to try to get help. She was a very innocent person, and things were very hard for her financially. And when the age came that she was able to get pension, I was to be very proud to see she having her own money. And that provided a lot of independence for her, and it made me very happy. So a no-no to that statement, please.
Right, well, thank you for that. And just to go back to the first point, I think, and she made a good point about the age, right? We have to look and see whether now sixty-seven is the right age for non-contributory pension. As Ms. Adams said earlier, we're now living a lot longer than we were fifty years ago, twenty years ago, right? And so it could be maybe sixty-eight for the non-con pension. And that, while that won't save NIS any money, it'll save governments some money so they can do more with what they have to improve other circumstances.
Good evening. I sat there, I listened to everything, everyone.
I don't think the people on here can hear you, so come a little closer, please.
I sat and I listened to everything that everyone had to say. You made a comment stating that there are structural issues and deficits. For a couple of years now, you've been hearing that governments, regardless of if it's B, D, or NDP, if they have an issue, they draw from the National Insurance Scheme. Now, you're saying in a couple of years, the scheme will be depleted. Is there any way for us Belgians who have contributed to the scheme to recover those funds? Because that is part and parcel of the problem. We cannot be putting money into a fund, and every time the government has an issue, they dip into the fund. Because at the end of the day, when you dip into the fund, you're dipping from money from the citizens. We didn't tell you that you could dip. No one asked us if you could dip. But now you're here and you're asking us for solutions to a problem that you guys created. We didn't create this problem. We are law-abiding citizens who sat, contributed faithfully to a scheme, thinking that when we get sixty-five, they move the table to sixty-seven, that we're assured a pension. It's not fair on no kind of level. And I sit and I listen to every single person speak about everything. And the first thing that you guys need to do is stop governments from dipping into our money.
You want to go? So thank you, thank you for your comments. And all I'll say is that there are rules that govern the National Insurance Fund and Investments. Any money that government borrowed or that was lent to government was done, as far as I have seen, in the proper way. There was debt restructuring, which accounted for all government debt. And I think, so we have to find a way, as she said, to ensure that governance, I mentioned good governance earlier, right? And I think it really relates to good governance and strong boards. So if there is a phone call from a minister or pressure from the government to lend some more money beyond what your limits say is acceptable, you say no, right? And I think, so we have to find a way to have boards and leaders that are going to be responsible and ensure that the funds are borrowed and invested wisely. And, you know, again, we have to remember, any money that was, that government spent was spent on the people of Barbados. You may not agree on how it was spent. Sorry, sorry, but, no? Well, I'll leave that one alone, and maybe Mr. Adams. But I really believe that when government collects and spends, right? It spends money in the budget, whatever budget it has.
Just before the next question, I just say, when it comes to governance, that this board feels very strongly that it's going to do everything in its powers to make sure that the rules around what's called the fund itself are respected. We know that rules have been changed in the past. I think twenty thirteen, the rule was changed to up the allocation in terms of money lent to the government. I think these things and the process by which it's done certainly need to be reviewed, you know? However that fund is managed, it has to be in the interest of the NIS first. I'll stop there.
Well, I just wanted, I just wanted to add my little two cents to that. As I said earlier, the National Insurance Scheme is a social security scheme. It assists with the development of the country in the sense that where people pay national insurance, those resources are pooled. But once you have those pooled resources, the country can develop its infrastructure and can do projects for the benefit of the people. Yes, that is one side of it. On the other side of it is how far do you proceed with your investments in government paper? I think, and Derek can correct me again, he knows the figures on the top of his head. For the last two actuarial reports, or possibly more, Derek, you can tell us, you have always recommended to us that our investment in government paper should be reduced.
Correct.
Presently, I don't know the figures. I think it's something like sixty-something percent. You go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, so, and so the chairman is talking about, so NIS does have an investment policy, and they've always had one for donkey years. And the policy includes what we call an asset allocation target, right? So it has equities, say, between, I don't know, five and ten percent. Well, each asset class has a range which is acceptable. Government bonds, I believe, was fifty percent for the most of the period in the last fifteen, twenty years. Sixty or, I think it's fifty, sixty? It doesn't matter. The point, though, is that for the last ten or fifteen years, they've exceeded the maximum limit in the investment policy, right? Which means that even though the policy existed, boards still allowed further investments to be made in government of Barbados, okay? And that is where I think the weakness lies. As I mentioned earlier, and I really believe this, you know, and I believe in good governance. If a minister calls, and the Minister of Finance ultimately has authority to drive investments, that probably can be looked at as a change. But if a board is resolute that we're not investing anymore in government, a phone call can change that unless it becomes a directive from the minister in writing, and then on the hook is the minister, not the board, right? And so hopefully, board members in the future, whether they be from labor, from employers, or from the government, can be strong enough to say, we agree with the policy we have in writing. We're not going to change from this policy. And then, so we're going to say no if any investment, whether it be public or private, does not meet the terms of the investment policy.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to say, shall we move on to the, you want one more point?
I just wanted to say two things. One, that with respect, the present situation with the board since twenty eighteen is that far from there being any invest, investment in government bonds or paper is the other way around because of the restructuring, et cetera, you know the story. But secondly, getting back to the board, the board, the board is, as far as I am concerned, a very strong board. It is institutionally or structurally sound and strong. By, in accordance with the Act, we have on the board the, a representative, a board member nominated by the National Union of Public Workers. And normally, the general secretary, Richard Green attends. If he can't attend those meetings, his deputy attends. We also have on the board, so you have the National Union of Public Workers represented on the board. And Richard will tell you at board meetings, Richard will say, I have my interests to represent. The other person on the board, the other union members, if I may say so, is a general, is a representative from the Barbados Workers Union. Who, and the same thing applies. So between the NUPW and the Barbados Workers Union, the interests of the employees in this country are vigorously represented. Three, you have the, another member of the board is a representative from the Barbados Employers Confederation. So employers are represented as well as a representative from the Barbados Hotel Tourism Association, which we consider to be our largest employer. So that when you look at the board, and then you try, you look at that, and you look, the government then appoints three board members, or the minister. And those board members are to be appointed in, you look at the qualifications and what they can do. One, the recent appointment, first of all, there was Mr. Avinash Pasad, dealing with investments. He was replaced by my friend Roden, who, as you can see, is knowledgeable and knows, as far as I am concerned, knows exactly what he's doing. In terms of investments, recently on the board, again, we have Mr. Michael Edgell, who is an accountant retired from KPMG. And not only that, he's familiar with the accounts of the NIS because he, because he was at KPMG, he had dealings with the NIS. So I say that to say that, yes, the board is a strong board, and this board has their number of issues that it has. But at the end of the day, I am satisfied that we have a strong board, and it is.
Thank you, Leslie. And just to underline a couple of things, we know about the investment rules and how they need to be enforced. This is more about those rules than anybody coming in and taking money. Nobody came and took money. This is really about following the government's policy. This, this is really about following the government's policy. But I want, I want to underline again that really we're here about all of these matters, but above all, this difference between the structure of this scheme in the nineteen sixties and the structure of it today in the twenty twenties, that structural problem that I, that I mentioned. So I'd invite, I'm sorry you've had to sit back now, but please come and, come and have your question, but, but let us remember the overall reason we're here.
Good evening. My name is Jane Goddard. I have been working for forty-six years and contributing continuously. I have benefited from maternity leave, I have benefited from sick leave. I, for the, for most of the forty-six years, I have been an accountant. One of my responsibilities for most of the forty-six years has been payroll. At one time, would have been probably the late seventies, the government used to change percentages and do retroactive payments and all sorts of things with tax and with national insurance. And I was one of the programmers at Plantations Trading Company Limited, who was responsible for programming those during the night so that they would be ready to work the next day. Now, I believe that the first thing that has to happen, no matter how strong the board is, is that the ten years without audited financial statements is unacceptable. We need to know what the position is. I heard the auditor general say that not only is P A Y, no, isn't that right? That national insurance is paying dead people. That I have a problem with. I believe that if there is an audit and things are put in perspective, we will be able to move forward from a better position. Now, I am old, not that old, though. And in my younger days, an officer from the national insurance scheme used to come around, she didn't come around every week or every month, but her visit was a pleasure. She came to check to see that all the calculations were correct and that we were doing what our duty was. That stopped many years ago. And I think that what we have to do now is to try to encourage people without threatening them to file and pay national insurance, whether they are self-employed or employees. I am happy that I have done my, I have performed my duty and my responsibility for forty-six years. And please God, when I reach sixty-seven, there will be money inside there for me to get my pension, because I've worked my tail off for forty-six years. Thanks. Good night.
I, I beg your pardon, ma'am, we, we, we just were deciding who would answer the previous, the previous comments, you know?
Okay, good night. My name is Cassandra Boeing. I have a number of things to say. I don't normally get involved in any of these matters, I really don't like being my business. But after listening to the press conference, I felt strongly about what I heard. And like one of the other members who spoke earlier, I remember when my grandmother got her pension taken away because she brought her three grandchildren to Barbados from an orphanage in Trinidad, and NIS told her that if she could afford to support three children additionally to what she had, then she did not need the money. So my grandmother went through all of the rest of her years until she died with no pension. That was wrong. When I heard the press conference, the first thing that hit me is another fear tactic, twelve years of money left. It, it seems like if every time we have a press conference, it brings fear on the country again, what gonna happen next? And as a person who has just retired and seeing what I got as a gratuity, because if I had a mortgage, a care to pay for, children to send to school, or God forbid, if I got ill, that money would be of no use to me. What I currently get as a pension, by the time that I then pay all the necessary bills, I am back to square one. Pension is like working from payday to payday. And I know a lot of people feel like this. I have a concern with the fact that money was borrowed from the NIS and not paid back. And I feel that somebody should be held responsible for that. With Caipol, if, as a small businessperson, you have to submit your financials every year. And if we have a national insurance department and all of these top people inside there, and we cannot get audited reports on a regular basis, then somebody should get fired. That's how I feel. At this point, I feel that legislation should be put in place, that no more money should be borrowed from NIS for the next twelve to fifteen years, unless it is for investment purposes. I also feel that it should be made mandatory that reports have to be filed on time, or reprimand those in charge for filing and due diligence, and due due diligence. A law should be enforced on employers, local, private, overseas entities, even churches, who have taken out the necessary funds and not paid into the system, and a requisite penalty applied for non-compliance. It is done with land tax, and it is done with VAT, and I feel it should be done here on police. Nothing should be allowed to go through the cracks. Employees who decide they want their pay, who want, employees who decide they don't want to pay in the NIS should be reprimanded. Likewise, sorry, employees who decide they want to pay their NIS themselves should be locked into a system to ensure that they can do so. We have the technology. The Prime Minister assured us we have the technology, and I know it can be done. When I went into the system at eighteen years old, I did not look down the road and think about retirement. And I believe that during my working years, we should have had some information workshops, seminars, something that would give you an understanding of what would happen down the road. That was never done. At this point, I believe that we can work with insurance companies to see who is willing to provide a good pension plan for workers and ask them to pay into the system along with their national insurance so that they can get the leverage going down the road. We need to educate, educate, educate. You see, we can't sit down here and say fifty-five years down the line, we're not checking for debts. It's a waste of time, okay? We need to educate from the primary schools all the way to the tertiary level about the scheme, the benefits, and what we as a people need to do to keep it sustainable. We cannot have people coming out to you, we as textbook artists, not knowing nothing more. And I, I, I really, I am saying that with every passion I got in my heart, because I work with some of them, textbook artists, and not knowing that these are things that they need to do. Also, when you work, when I worked in government and I wanted to have a side business, it was like pulling teeth. You had to follow the rules, you had to write and ask for permission. Had I been allowed that second job while I was there, I would be able to sit down quiet tonight and say, I have my next take. This is something we need to go back and look at. We need to find an incentive, not money, not money of some kind, to get small entrepreneurs to pay into the system. Again, more education is needed here, again, in the form of workshops and seminars and face-to-face conversations. We ask everybody now to become an entrepreneur. The bank is giving you real stress. Nobody has looked at that. We got thousands of office space downtown that lock up, and nobody would say, bring the prices down so the entrepreneurs could go in there, so we could pay the system. You see, you can't look at this thing in a vacuum. You've got to bring all the sectors in, provide the necessary things going forward so people feel comfortable to be able to go out there and say, look, I believe in this system, there are giving me X, I'm going to do Y. And this is my last little bit. There must be transparency at every corner, whether it be NIS or anybody else in this country. If we do not get it right, no, we will suffer even more down the road. And a lot of people in this country suffering, might not be all up there, might not be some of us in here, but a lot of people in this country suffering. Gone are the days when your next-door neighbor would give you a bread fruit, now you've got to pay for it. That's how serious it get in this country. Many of my friends from overseas ask me, how will you afford to live in Barbados? And I usually smile and say, I do with what I have, and I'm grateful. We will not keep the cream of the crop around this country, they will seek greener pastures. Honestly, if I had the opportunity, I would go someplace else and live. I, I don't want to live here anymore. I really don't. I, I want the same problem somewhere else with different people. The other problem that I have is that every time you see a board announce the same faces, it's like Coke and Pepsi, the same people, the same faces. What about me? Why can't I be on the board? I might not be an actuary, I might not be an accountant, I might not be none of those things, but I got a brain, and I understand, and I probably understand better than the people who are on the board. What about all these other people in here? We don't get the opportunity to be on the board. And yes, sir, I understand BWU, tourism, and all of these people, all these people wrap up in the same bed, they're going to speak the same language. We have to be accountable for all of us, from the government back down to the man in the street. This is paramount. We have a lot of people who I saw on Kaduma Day walking around selling water. You think that person is going to pay NIS? It's a seasonal thing. How are we going, and that person might go out there and get hit by a truck. Somebody has to pay for that. Every time somebody gets shot in this country, they run to the Q E H and they get patched up. At great expense. But I might be waiting for a surgery and I hear Covid. I hope people are listening. I just had a friend who went in there, dialysis, and there was not a machine. When a machine was provided, nobody knew how to use it. That person died. This is real people, this is real. And I, I honestly, I feel real passionate about it, it is very real. We have, it, it is not only looking at this scheme, it has to be a holistic thing that we are doing. The world has changed, and more changes are coming, and we have to be ready. If Covid has taught us nothing, let us teach, let us learn from it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, ma'am. I think we'll have the CEO make a few observations.
Yeah. Good evening again. Thank you very much for those recommendations. Thank you very much for taking the time to document those. If you are minded, we will be happy to get what you have written, because I thought there was a lot of useful information there, including the fact that it's a holistic thing that we are dealing with, and you have to look at it in, in broadly. So I'm just going to speak to a couple of the things that were raised by both of you. Certainly, compliance is an issue, and I was pleased to hear that at one time, when you saw the inspectors, it was a pleasure. Over time, that has changed, but if we could get back there, and that is their intention, that the inspectors help with registration and guidance and information and so forth. So I'd be happy to hear, talk to you later, to, you know, to get some details on what the inspectors did, because I'm so happy to hear that the inspector is a pleasure. I have some inspectors up there, and they're happy to hear that as well. So, a couple of things. Dead people, I know that is a big issue. At present, we pay each month forty-eight thousand pensioners. So this is pensioners only, this is not disability or anything, forty-eight thousand pensioners. Years ago, the life certificate was discontinued. So therefore, we wait for the, the monthly update from the registry. So right now, we are processing payments for the end of August into September. So we are always ahead, so we are always going to be mailing out pensions ahead. So we depend on two systems. One, updating our records based on the registry and the goodwill of families to notify us that the person have died. So, so I would say that five out of forty-eight thousand, and the system was able to still identify, the five out of forty-eight thousand does show that we do have a system in place. And when I mail out at the end of August checks, somebody's going to have a check that takes them to the end of September, but will may, God forbid, die in that period. That is what we are looking at, okay? So we, we have looked at how often we should get the updates from the registry, how often we should update our system, and we are certainly addressing it. When we did some investigations, these things happened in twenty twenty, and when we went to the home of a deceased person, they had the check stacked there. So they, they just figured that afterward we would stop and stop sending them, but they didn't think to return them or to notify us that had happened. So, but rest assured that that is something that we are working on. The other area is the audit. The, the NIS manages six funds, and the funds are all separate, the NIS Fund, the Severance Fund, unemployment, catastrophe, retraining, and the Sugar Workers Providence Fund. And I want to pause here and say that the Sugar Workers Providence Fund still have a number of persons, five persons who still receive benefits, and, and so that is slowly coming to an end. And, and that shows you that from time to time, you always have to adjust, the Sugar Workers Providence Fund was needed fifty-five years ago, but is not needed now. So you always have to be looking at what social security measures that you need to put in place. So I go back to the funds and to say that they're managed separately. The Act governs how they should be managed, there is, there's no real commingling of the funds. Each fund has its own income statement and its own balance sheet. We take our responsibilities for managing those funds very seriously, and all my deaths would be the July thirty-first, twenty twenty, yeah, July? Maybe August, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two financial statements. It is my understanding, because most of you know that I am new there, but in going back through and we're looking at where we are, in twenty-ten, the financial requirements were changed so that you move from a cash accounting to an accrual accounting. Now, many of you know- Now, many of you know that when a company is doing its audits, it will send a letter to the creditors, the debtors, do you owe this? Now, when we send out those kinds of letters, nobody is going to reply, yes, I owe NIS this. So therefore, we have to justify and show the auditors how we can validate the accounts receivable. If not, we go back to cash. So it is only one section of our financial statements that are there that the auditor, and so the auditor general, is working with us to develop and to implement, I would say, a framework that will satisfy internationally accepted accounting standards, and also provide what we call, and all of you are there accountants, we know, supporting schedules that can be validated. So the financial statements are prepared. They are prepared. And for the smaller funds, catastrophe and so forth, they have been audited up to 2015, 2016. So don't feel that we don't do financial statements each month, which go to the board. They are done, they are prepared. It is just working with the auditor to get a framework that is acceptable, that can see those financial statements certified. And then once they're certified, then they're laid in parliament and they'll be public documents. So we would apologize that you haven't had sight of them because there aren't public documents, but rest assured they are there. Rodan, I think that... I don't, I think I answered most of the questions that you asked.
I think that's...
If you need any further, I am happy to share with you.
I would just add on one thing there about the timing. We are very hopeful the accounts from 2012 to 2017, we're aiming to settle those by the end of this year, and the rest by June next year.
I am Norma Springer. And endorse everything that has been said before. I want to posit that fixing the NIS is just fixing the roof of the house. We have to look at the walls and the foundation. And the walls and the foundation is actually the labour structure systems, how the labour systems are organized and managed in Barbados. And we spoke about good design and capturing all the workers. And when I say all, definitely all, and you're working on that. I give that. I have some cousins in the United States who work as barbers and carpenters and masons, and they have to be registered. They have to be licensed every year. And that license issue is related to their income tax payments and all other taxes and rates that they have to pay. That is not rocket science. The other thing that concerns me is that in this day and age, Barbados still has all these little funny little databases, a database at the registry, a database at NIS, a database, left, right, and center. Where is a central database that manages all the data and every institution have access to it according to its needs? Why do you have to wait to get a report from the registry? The coroner comes, he certifies, he puts it into his iPad, it goes to the registry, and it should come into your office same time. It should be flagged, even if it's just an orange flag, that you're alerted, this person has died. The coroner and the registry are going through their processes, and that alerts you to do certain things. So we have, we're talking smart and all sorts of fancy technology and engineering systems, and we still have all these little minutie around the place, which I can assure you is much more expensive than having one central database that manages all the data for Barbados and becomes even an income sector if we manage it for the rest of the region. Labour. We've been having workforce adjustments over the years, and NIS or the systems have not been adjusting. There's been automation of labour, which means that fewer people in the middle and lower-tiered sectors are required. Those are people falling out of the workforce, which means that contributions from them become less. We spend millions of dollars in education every year, and the return on that investment, to my mind, is dwindling. What you invest in education today is supposed to put into the NIS tomorrow, because you are expecting higher-tiered people above gardeners, room attendants, security guards. And I am afraid that Barbadians are falling out of the higher-tiered income brackets which pay into the NIS. I say this because I have here advertisements from the Nation newspaper. Here is one dated the twenty-ninth of July, twenty-twenty-two, sorry, twenty-ninth of June. Nation newspaper, page thirty-four. Vacancies. Nichols Bakery. A depot supervisor. A baker and a pastry maker. This is what the government, this is what Nichols Bakery has approached the Immigration Department for. Twenty-twenty-two. What has happened to all the bakers we've had? What's happened to the hospitality institution? What has happened to the BIMAP, who's teaching and training supervisors over the years? We need to import a supervisor to sell bread. And we all know how the work permit system works. We all know how foreign people in the workplace are paid, what goes on the books, what goes offshore. We know how it works. So Barbados has to really have a proper integration system of what skill sets are available on this island that the Immigration Department has access to, to know that when you make an application like this, it has no valid basis for going forward. So when we talk about the structural things in the NIS, we need to look at the structural things in the labour market, in the labour management systems, and then put the roof on, which is the NIS. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Edgell. And I'm happy to hear that Mr. Osborne was around for twenty years. In your introduction, you talked about the amendments that were made to NIS. We had increases three to four years. We changed the retirement age from sixty-five to sixty-seven. What we have not heard is the impact that that had on the fund. Ten years ago, we heard that the NIS Fund will go belly up in twenty-thirties, in twenty-forties. We made adjustments to the contributions, but you had your slide earlier with the possible solutions. And on that slide, you still talked about increasing contributions. You still talked about increasing the retirement age. What was the impact of changing those contribution rates and increasing the retirement age on the expiry date, if you want to call it, on the fund? Because if we are going to say that the impact was one year, two years, three years, we are going to be here ten years later to wash this all over again. Was that a viable solution? Is it going to work again? Was NIS, was, is the structure of NIS even designed to last a lifetime? Are we putting plasters on swords? Are we fixing symptoms and not the real problem? Because like, I would have expected to see slides, and perhaps that's because how I envision things on the solutions and the impact that that will have on the fund. Would it extend the life of the fund five years? I know you're an actuary. You are. We did your triangulations and all of that. So I don't think that it's an out-of-the-way question. But if we are going to say that we increased contributions three years, I think it was three or four years back-to-back, we extended pension age, and the impact on the fund was just to increase its life by two years, I don't see how that is a viable solution to be up on a slide today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that. You said some really, really good things there. I'll try and be as simple as I can. So... Excuse me? Okay, so in 2004, reforms were done, and hopefully, well, I'll say first, hopefully, everybody has been able to download from the website, either the parliamentary website or the NIS website, the report, the full report. You only see a snapshot on these slides here tonight. But the report is about eighty pages long, and it includes some charts that show the history of the fund. And you can clearly see after pension reform, the size of the reserves began to grow. Right? So it was a clear indication that it began to grow. Not in the report is a graph that I have seen internally, which is a graph of the average pension, which is designed to be, at least stay steady after reform, and you see that. So the reforms actually had some impact after the few years. What has happened, however, is that the number, the economy, the economy, the number of people working, number of people contributing, are a lot less today than was projected. Right? And so if you make a forecast from fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, and instead of the economy going at one and a half percent, say, going at point seven percent, jobs are not being created, and the NIS is losing year after year, as we saw. As we saw here, the number of contributors is actually going down from almost one-twenty-eight thousand to one-hundred-and-five thousand. The challenge is the base, right? So the contribution income is not growing as fast as expected after reform was done. And so, like in your families, right, every now and again you have to take stock as to where we are and how are things going, right? Someone may lose a job in a family, and therefore income may be down for a while. You may get a bonus. So things change, right? And so in our context, things have changed. We're still getting older. We expected that. Fertility rates have been about where they were for the last fifteen, twenty years. We expected that. The economy, we'd expect to remain this low and for growth to be that small. And so the idea for going forward now, why we don't have in the report the effect of certain solutions, and I'll jump to this slide now, is we need to hear from you first. We need to hear from Barbados. What structure, what type system, what age, how generous should NIS really be? And so after we hear these ideas from you, and you had many ideas today so far about compliance, about systems speaking to one another, about good design, and all those things. If we, as Barbadians, believe that every self-employed person, whether it be a vendor, a lawyer, or a doctor, needs to pay contributions before driving a ZR van, and the government does that, we can't have people screaming out two years later saying, my sister can't drive bus because, you know, she has to pay and she can't afford it, right? So we have to make sure as a country, that in the US, folks pay their taxes, because Uncle Sam is going to get you, right? Maybe in the Caribbean, and Barbados is not alone, this is across the region, nobody has successfully done self-employed compliance. Nobody. But if you're serious about doing it, it comes with consequences. And so, and that's why I mentioned at my end, we have to come with some beliefs and some priorities for the reforms. What do we really, really want to achieve? And are we willing to abide by those things that are required for us to achieve those things? And one of which is the self-employed, that the coconut vendor, the doctor, the lawyer, the taxi driver cannot ply his trade if he doesn't pay. And he could pay it once in his licence, probably pay it over twelve-month period. As Lady Selby have systems now, we can find different ways to do different things, right? Allow shopkeepers to take contributions, the same way Lime and DigiCell have been able to let shopkeepers sell minutes. Find a way to let shopkeepers or rum shops sell NIS contribution essentially, right? Let's make it simple, so people wherever they are, not having to go up to the office between eight and four and five days a week, but find a way to meet them where they are with technology in your hands, in your phones, and pay contributions. So we have a system that everybody pays in and can be sustainable for the long term.
Respectfully, I don't think you answered the question, because my question was very specific to the impact that the increase in contributions and the retirement age had on the fund.
Right.
And if, if, and I heard everything that you said, I understand everything that you said, but it did not specifically address the question which I asked. Because if we are going, people are, the buzz up there is, we want to raise the retirement age to seventy-two. We just raised it to sixty-five. How much impact did that have on the life of the fund? If it only had one year, how much will seventy-two have on the fund? And you didn't answer the question that I asked, and I appreciate everything that you just said. It doesn't mean that what you said wasn't worth it.
I got you. Mm-hmm. Right, so what I'll say is that, so reforms was one variable in the mix. I mentioned the economy. So we had a positive, hopefully, from the reforms, more contributions coming in, less benefits going out. But the economy and real lives happened so that the number of contributors going in has decreased so much more to offset whatever benefits they were from reforms, right? And so in the report, we can see in the chart, some effects of reforms. There's no real number as to how many years it gave us, or how many years the economy negative has given us. But it's, upsetting circumstances have happened.
Good night, everyone. My name is Wiggins. I have some solutions to help in terms of the fund. Some may have been mentioned already. I know one has been mentioned, where we stop governments from putting, having access to NIS funds. NIS funds are funds that I put there. So government should not have free access. And when I say free access, let me explain. Chairman and Deputy Chairman, both of you, I blame for some of this debacle. Because you should have said no to government when they come. But you know what? It will cost you your jobs. Because Don Marshall, when he said no, they replaced him and give us someone else that tell them yes. You've got a backbone. Don't be spineless jellyfish. Two, government needs to repair every saint that they take from NIS, whether in cash or gold bars, one of the two. Three. Three. We, the contributor city fund, want to take both the chairman and the deputy from being compromised. So you should not have no rights to give approval for any money going out to investment unless me, the contributor, my money. You put something, you send out, say, this is what we want to invest in, and you tell me if I agree. You give me all, give me everything I need to know. Don't let me go and dig and throw you that at that length. And I will say, yes, I think this is a good investment. This is the reason why you think it's a good investment. You have my blessing. But tell me, NIS invests sixty million in a four-season. That is nothing for them to invest in. They get no return on investment. You've got three, two buildings up there, that NIS built. What return on investment then get him in government? Say hello in the offices. What return on investment then get him? I want to tell him, me, that I'm making good decisions when it comes to investment. I say no. I say no. Now, the lady made an interesting point there, and I agree with her. I'm trying to remember what point she made. Can't remember that point. No, the next one, I think all the citizens of Barbados should do a class action lawsuit against the government and make them repair, as I said, every saint in gold bars or cash. You see the paper that government has NIS for there? Tell me, wouldn't really take one again about anything? They got pensioners crying, no way to tell them they can get back the little money when they decide, all right, let me buy the bonds, help Barbados and then you get back my return for my pension so I can live good. I've got a lot of, a lot of pensions, so they're suffering because of government paper that needs to stop. So gentlemen, chairman and when I got backbone to tell the government, no, going forward, that is what I want to know. And increasing the age is a no-no. You need to bring in younger people into the system who can work longer. When they hit say, I would like to retire, all like no, and that is truth. You think the average lifespan I hear that the deputy said is eighty? I disagree with you, sir. The average lifespan anybody is giving is seventy years. I would like that when I retire, I got fifteen years of good enjoyment for retirement. I am not working till no sixty-seven, no, no seventy-six, no, no seventy-two. I work until, I would like to retire at fifty-five, but that impossible neither. So I, they take the sixty-five. Increasing the payments, not the issue, that will not help either because we did that back in the day and say, oh, it can help. It help? No. You know why? When they using the excuse that people find, oh, system, that the issue, I would like to know from the actuary, call you the twenty years in the business, how much money government take out the NIS and they pay back? I want every saint. Government need to pay back me money and you need to put that as one of your recommendations. But sir, you look your job and you all keep getting your paper roll, don't do that.
Thank you, ma'am. I think there are a few things I would I would I would say. I think in governance terms, if the chair and deputy chair do not follow the guidelines that are laid down in the investment policy statement, the NIS, yeah, they they should walk away or they should be sacked. Certainly, that that would be my attitude. And if, as has been the case in the past, that the decision is imposed on them, they then might wanna think to themselves, what am I actually doing on this board? If uh even though I say, don't do it, it gets it gets done. You you talked about the approvals of investments. I I don't wanna misunderstand you, I think you were saying you would like to have a voice in that. I just wanna say at the moment, the NIS has a dedicated investment unit. I think there are four people and one more to join who are highly qualified, they are professionals, they scour the market for investments, they analyze them and they present, they present the papers to the board. So the board is not going around choosing these investments. And I think it would be a bit unwieldy to have citizens actually vote on whether they want to improve a project or not, um, without the necessary financial training to make a good assessment. If in retrospect, when the when the reporting is done and these things continually do not work out, well, then you should have recourse to say that investment unit is actually not doing its its job. More broadly, we have to invest. It's it's very important, we have to do it properly. You know, we have to have professionals in there to actually make the assessments and and do it properly. I think I heard, I'm not sure if it was you or the previous lady referred to to Four Seasons. I'm gonna say the money that NIS put into Four Seasons was nine million dollars and at the time of the debt restructuring, it was all repaid by the Ministry of Finance. NIS did not lose money on that particular deal. You also mentioned the property portfolio. Property portfolio in the NIS is worth about three hundred and thirty million dollars. At the moment, the the gross yield is over eight percent. I can't give you the net yield because I'm still trying to find out what it is, but eight percent gross is pretty good. I'm fairly certain that a lot more can be done on the cost side, so the real yield isn't below six percent. But I'm afraid I can't give you those numbers tonight because I I don't have them. Um, I I think I'll hand over to the actuary now because there are a couple of things I think he would he would like to 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 say.
Yeah, there's one question about how much money government has borrowed and how much they have paid back or not paid back. And so the NIS does not have audit statements, but every year, the actuary, every three years, the actuary comes in and gets what Ms. Tudor mentioned were internal accounts. I know, I know, I'm going back, I'm going back. So the NIS has, since I've been around, always had a very reliable listing of investments, all the assets it owns, government, well, fixed deposits, treasury bills, uh, government Barbados bonds, properties, equities overseas and so on, right? So we've always relied on on that investment listing. So government has borrowed money over the time and most of the bonds have rolled over and rolled over. And for the first time in twenty eighteen was when the NIS actually did, government restructured and instead of owing NIS three point nine billion, they ended up owing them two point nine billions, like a billion dollars was lost in debt restructuring for the NIS. So that was the first time that I'm aware of, right, that the government had not either paid back or will not be paying back any money to the NIS that it borrowed in the past. And that was about one in net, one billion dollars in total for all five, for all five funds, right? So that's one, that's one thing. The other thing is that investments come with risk and it's a job of the investment management team to assess each opportunity. Some of them will do well. So for example, on the stock market in the US, last year would have been a fantastic year. So far this year, it's gonna be a down year, right? But over the long period, equities tend to outperform other investments. And so and so when you in in big money business, for lack of a better word of saying it, right, there's gonna be some good, there's gonna be some bad. But overall, if you go in making informed decisions by doing research properly, assessing each investment opportunity with the risk and the rewards, you should come out on top most of times. And if you look at, you know, the graph in the in the report that shows the investment curve, investment yield historically, it's been very good. The investment returns of the NIS have have been very good over time, averaging over five percent. You know, there were over six percent for almost every year between eighty-three, eighty-four and up to two thousand and fifteen, over six percent, right? Most of government bonds. So in in terms of the investments themselves, for the most part, they've been good. Having too many eggs in the government basket um came back to haunt the NIS four years ago with debt restructuring. But as I mentioned earlier, debt restructuring really was a loss for NIS, right? A savings for taxpayers. So it essentially made Barbadian taxpayers cost neutral. And the goal of debt restructuring, I believe, was to make Barbados stronger. And so hopefully that pans out and every money, every dollar NIS government, that the government owes NIS, is now about two point something billion. Whenever they mature and whenever they become due, they can pay them back. That's the that's the anticipation, that's the expectation.
Um, I know you tried to explain, but all the fluff, you still ain't explaining it properly. And the buildings, I'm not talking about NIS building, yes, buildings have value, but I want to know, does government actually pay rent every month to NIS for renting out all these buildings? Do they actually pay the rent to NIS or is it done physical cash or is it done by government paper?
Well, you know, I think I think Deputy Chair could answer it better than I can, but I could give, I'll give you my answer, that Deputy Chair could give you his.
Okay.
In my part, in my view, one of the best things that ever happened to this country was the IMF program. And the answer to that is very, why? Because it imposed upon us fiscal discipline. When I joined the I the um NIS board, the transport board owed money, the national housing owed money, other statutory corporations owed money. But you know what, you know what the IMF said? The IMF said, you're not going to get another drawdown unless everybody brings their payments up to date. And you know what happened since then? We at the NIS are being paid on a monthly basis. And there are times, yes, when there are certain statutory bodies who do not pay, very simple, you call up the Ministry of Finance and you say, this, 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 this statutory body owes us two months' rent or two months' contributions. And you know what happens? We get it. So yes, currently, I can assure you that we are getting paid and I think I could be wrong. I know um the IMF program is coming to an end soon and perhaps we may go into another one, I do not know. But the point is fiscal discipline for the entire country of Barbados, in my view, was the best thing that ever happened to to Barbados.
Okay, that, glad to hear that.
Yeah, you you, I'm I'm very glad you asked that question because we actually had the same question on a call today from um Walter Blackman, who may know who's a brass tax host, asking specifically about the uh what are called the coupon payments on on our bonds. So I'll start with your with your question. Yeah, government, uh, those properties that are tenanted by government departments pay in cash, they have to pay in cash under the BIRK program. The bond portfolio, which is about two point one billion out of the three point nine billion, yields eight percent at the moment, is paid in cash. You know, I I will say as an aside that eight percent sounds great, but I I think we would look at diversifying that um in 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 all sincerity because we still have too much money in those bonds, although it's paid in cash at the moment, it's just prudent to to lower the risk. And the final point, I think I missed this earlier, you talked about arrears and money money owed. At the time of the debt restructure, the the government before owed four hundred and sixty-nine million in arrears. All of that was cleared in the debt restructure. So I hope that answers your question, ma'am.
Okay, um, I heard someone mention the inspectors. One of the failings of NIS um is the, I'm not sure if it's the inspectors, I don't know if you have a team, but I feel you need a team to go out there, or if it's every month or every two months, and say to businesses, hey, you need to pay pay your national insurance and you have until whatever date after that is five percent, are we coming? And we, you should be able to seize the business and tell the employees, run the business, pay up, and when you done, and when all the money is paid, the owners can get back the business. That needs to happen because you have too many employers in Barbados not paying and is affecting the workers. Now, my, one of my suggestions was government write off VAT. VAT that I and you pay when we go into businesses. It seemed that central government didn't want that money. But instead of writing it off, what they should have done was to tell the businesses, you have to pay because it's not coming out of your coffers, it's coming directly from the citizens, take that money and by some law that they usually do, transfer it into the NIS fund. That's what they should have done. Because if they don't want it for central government, I'm sure NIS could use the money. So I would like the government of Barbados, Amir, Amar, Marley, and you know you are listening, reverse that decision to write off all that VAT and bring it back in, even let the people play a little slowly and get to NIS, boost back up the fund. This thing of writing off money that I pay as a hard-earned citizen needs to stop. That billion that you mirror write off because of that uh debt restructuring, that needs to be paid, I don't care, that my hard-earned money. If I was a millionaire, trust me, I would sue this government, 'cause that's my money, that's tiffing my money on my nose in clear slate. One of the other things, I pay NIS and I got all my pay sets from the time I work. When I go to NIS, when it's time for my retirement, I tell them how much money I pay in there and I wanna how much money when they give me. So if I pretend, I'm more make sure I get back my portion. And I don't think you should be looking at me and telling me, you can't get none, hello, dog of me wardo, 'cause I want my money that I put in there. So don't come and tell me I can't get none, that's my money I work for that pretending. Or not, give me every, all my money in in hand and tell me you got a choice if you want to put in the fund or not. And if I make the choice not to put in the fund, I should know I can't get no money when I reach retirement age. If I put in the fund, I know I entitled to my money. So one, I want the highest fundamental is to stop government from having access to NIS funds, that's the highest fundamental. And these investments in certain things, I feel should be a no-no. Some things don't give you no return on investment and it should be, government, what government got right building hotels, left that for the private sector sector? Concentrate on my, on the education system that needs fixing as well.
Thank you, ma'am. May I just say we've got about ten minutes left, if anyone else would like to come with a with a question?
Hi, good night. My name is Dwight and my first thing is I saw the, we wanted to, I saw the two options get brought, well, perpetuated by the media, which would have been the increase in the pension age and the second one was reducing the maximum pension, which I think both, both are uncreative, all right? The first one, we talk about increasing the pension age, we also got like unemployment. I saw from the figures that was thirty thousand people less working than before. So if you increase the pension age, you also stop younger people who being, who want to work and who can contribute for much longer to actually work and contribute to the fund. We also, this is in itself a multifaceted problem that NIS is facing, and I don't think NIS alone should be in this, not only just cabinet, there should be someone from the health sector here, because if you're allowing me to work to seventy-two, how can I be, how effective will it be at seventy-two? How effective will you be at seventy-two, Miss Nat, right? How effective will you be at seventy-two, ma'am? Some of you, some, some persons might get the bench, you might not be able to hear well, all of a sudden you go hearing it. Being efficient also has to do something to do with it, so we need to, that is should never be an option in the first place, given the fact that in your earlier presentation, you also, you also stated that these measures were taken before. So we have to come with something new and a bit more creative. Now, one of the major issues we have here is that the population is declining and it is aging, which means that it's going to affect the health sector, which means that government gonna pull more money from taxes and we gonna be in the same loop again. So we get, it's basically one big loop. So this cannot be the answer. You want? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say somewhere along the line, the, it 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 seems to me that people feel that we have put forward an answer. We have not put forward an answer. There may be solutions that we have put forward. When you have a problem, when you have a problem, you put your options on the table. Those were options that have been made, but but really and truly, I have listened and I'm speaking for myself now, rather than the board of the NIS or anything, because we have not yet discussed it. But presently, I think I've listened to Derek and 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 Derek said it earlier, there is, and and a lot of people coming up here said it earlier, those solutions of raising contributions and raising age, we have heard from you all tonight that those solutions will not work, right? So take those solutions aside, there is a, and I've heard that there is the other solution and perhaps we have, perhaps it has not been expressed as forcefully as it could be. And one of those solutions really is changing the structure of the benefits and the payments. And I want to read from um the this article, I think it appeared in the Sunday Sun by Professor, they got me here, I can't read too good and this like, but I... they got me here, I can't read too good and this like, but I'll try my best to read it. Professor Justin Robinson, a former chairman of the NIS board. And the question was, and that is same, the question to him from the article yesterday was this. How do we ensure that we don't walk this path again? And that's the question that the lady in the red up there was saying, and a lot of people have been saying, how do we, we have done things in the past, it didn't work. And you know what his answer was? His answer is answers in terms of ensuring that we don't walk this road again, soon again, there, there may be need to take a look at the structure of the benefits. So therefore, and Derek, Derek has said it tonight, at least on two occasions, but perhaps not, as I said before, not forcefully. The solution, as I sit down here, speaking for myself, is that we, and we don't want to walk this path again, is that we're gonna have to look at the whole structure of payments, contributions and benefits. That lady in the yellow top said, when she's sixty-seven or when she's sixty-five or when she's time, when she's sixty-five, right? She wants to go to NIS and she wants to know how much money she's paid in.
No, I don't have a money.
Right, and you want to make sure you're getting your money back out. Right, that's the point. So the, and that, that, what, what she has suggested there is perhaps one of the solutions to the whole situation. Am I right on that, Derek? Right, so that's one of the solutions. So what I'm saying is that yes, I agree with people, with, with you all in here tonight, that walking the same path again, raising contributions, that, that's not going to work. We have to look at the structural change. You rest assured that the, when I say a structural change, Derek has come with the figures tonight. The truth about it is that the present, like anything else, the present structure of the NIS is perhaps, we have perhaps outgrown that. That act was passed in nineteen sixty-seven. This is fifty-five, sixty-six, fifty-six years later. Everything in Barbados has changed. So that, so that, so that the answer, the, the, the solutions are, we are here listening to you all and we listen to what everybody says. And then we have to translate that, what you all say, into policy.
Yeah, well, that's definitely the only problem I have here, you know, we only get one.
No, but I was just addressing, I was just addressing that issue.
That's funny, I agree with you completely. But we will wait to see if, if we do what we always do, which is the definition of madness. But I will wait to see, I hope, hopefully in my lifetime that we do something different. But so my second problem was that we do, that is noted, is that if we do have a declining population, we have an aging population, and it will cause you all to spend more money, well, use more of the, the sickness benefit. Is this correct? That's correct term for the fund? What you all pay?
Old age pension.
Pardon? No, you all also pay sick benefits, correct?
Right.
Right, so I'm saying is that if we, we have an aging and declining population, as populations age, you will spend more money on healthcare, which mean more people will still be out and you all be spending more money in the sickness benefit anyway.
But it's small, it's small compared to the old age pension.
It's smaller.
It's very small.
Yeah, well, you check the age of the seventy-two, well, in, in theoretically, we check the age of the seventy-two, we still have that problem again, becoming, we become more, we multiply tenfold. All right, so the only way to increase the population is two ways, natural increase and migration. None of the two of them will work because the economic situation is not conducive to people procreating. So that is an issue in itself where we have to get the economy started. So if we're, if we're gonna do that, I think it is time that, as Dwight said, it's multifaceted. We need government then to invest in some other area. Now, I don't believe in government being in everything, as, well, we see the Four Seasons project, other things in the perfect sector. But it is time for government to facilitate the creation either of, uh, a new industry coming in, a new business, or just paving a way for something else to come in to, uh, for one. Create more employment, so you all can get, while you're thirty thousand people that are being unemployed, people go to feed their families and then have the enjoyment to create. You can't procreate when you're broke, you can't feel comfortable, you can't feed children when they're hungry or when you're hungry. So we need to have, as I said, we need to look at it from many different angles.
I, 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 and I translate what you have said, and that reminds me of the Sparrow Calypso, you can't make love on hungry belly.
I remembered something I had not spoken about. I would like to think that the board at the NIS has the best interests of the people of Barbados at heart. To that end, I believe that the board members of the NIS should declare their, the other boards they serve on to make sure that there are no conflicts with the money that is going out of the NIS. So I believe that every board member should declare the boards they serve on and any board member being elected should have to declare the boards they serve on before they are elected.
Okay, let's, I'd like to make this the last question for the evening. We've run past time, so please come forward and ask.
Good night, my name is Shanta Alim. And I don't necessarily get involved with this kind of thing, but as a young person and hearing of all of the possibilities of changes that might come about, I'm a little scared. And I am an entrepreneur as well. Over the last couple of years, switched over. I'm a mother of four, so I think I significantly contributed to the economy, okay? But my thing is, I've been hearing from the time I have been going to school, um, right back down to the ministry, Minister of Education at that time, um, saying how we need to increase the population, we need the women and laymen to breathe, we need more children. But really and truly, I didn't plan to have four. I ended up with four. And I will not change anything because I am blessed. Every time I got one, I was given all the opportunities that I can be able to provide. I am one also that was very fortunate with any NIS scheme, with my husband as well, in terms of the maternity leave, sickness benefits, whatever the case may be. When I switched over to entrepreneurship, I am like clue, I was like clueless. But in certain things in which is that, um, as a citizen, you know that you should or should not do, especially when it is that you're going to new ventures. And I'm saying that to say like, um, when it is that we try to get, you know, with the banks and all these things, it's, all these things have to be provided in order for you to get through. But from the time we had the COVID hit, and as, as I said, it's my husband and I who are entrepreneurs. So no, obviously, we are not gonna get, we weren't getting anything from the NIS. I had to make sure during the shutdown to pay NIS for my employees to make sure that they can get their contributions. Because how I see them, if they can't eat, I'm not going to be able to eat. But my husband and Ivan, Mia and Marley had implemented the five hundred dollars for the employers for each person for the, either the two to three months that we were on shutdown. This, that, that was nothing. And obviously, as a household of six, it's, it's hard to say that you got dipping and you still got to pay for your employees. No, I know there are employers out there who does not pay. And that is very unfortunate. But another point in which was mentioned tonight that I think that should be really looked at is education. A lot of people out there still really do not understand or know how important the NIS contributions are for them in the long run because of a lot of horror stories that they hear people having troubles. Either getting or they don't know what they're gonna get when they get this age. I know this whole thing with the pension plan probably will be depleted. It is scary. I am at this stage, if I had the option of the money which I pay to NIS, I would put in a separate account to guarantee that when it is I get to my pension age, I have money. Because at this stage, what y'all talking about tonight, I don't even know or I'm not comfortable to say. In the next twelve to fifteen years, where I still have to be working, all the money that I paid in, whether for myself or my employees, got me any benefit to me? It's all right to say that the government shouldn't do this, the government should, should not do that. But at the end of the day, we, it's not fair that all of these things happen within the NIS and they come to the people of Barbados who especially pays to tell them in twelve to fifteen years, they might not get nothing, it's not fair. And then, another thing is, we, they all open, y'all open and say that we are at the stage with COVID kind of like easing off, more or less. I see on a night, businesses closing at eight o'clock. If it is that NIS want more contributions, people gotta get paid more. In order for people to go get paid more, they can work the longer times. I find with this COVID, a lot of businesses take this opportunity to cut down people pay and not extend back the time and shutting down the country. Like sometimes you driving about after nine o'clock, the road date ain't nothing that you can leave work and really and truly get to go and do, even especially a supermarket closing at eight o'clock. And the only way for people to pay a little more is to extend the time. Years ago, we was even saying, why is that we can structure Barbados in a way to work half a day? Like make more things that can be relevant to twenty-four hours and extend the, the, the payment time of people to pay more into the NIS as well. And then this whole catastrophe fund y'all having, I don't, I don't even, like, I really would like to know what that catastrophe fund covers. And then on the other aspect that, that is, that I would like to speak about is the maternity leave. Now, obviously, being a mother of four, I can tell you, it is not attractive for a lot of Beijing women to get children in this economy. It getting harder and harder. And then you got to deal with some employers that ain't want pay, want find as a reason to cut you off from paying to come back to work. And then you going through the NIS, probably only to get twelve weeks for a maternity leave. You got to make it more attractive, it's just like in any business, if you give some, you get back some. So if you extend maternity leave in a career of like four to six months or something to give the parents more time, you might get encouraged to people to bring more children because you got, you just got give to get. That's my voice saying.
So thank, thank you, thank you for those, for those comments. And I'll just say one thing before we leave. If the, under the worst case scenario, if the fund ever is depleted, it does not mean no more NIS. NIS will still collect contributions every week, every month, to pay whatever benefit it can. Okay, so don't think that the projection that NIS may be, the fund may be depleted means that all your money that you put in so far is for naught, right? And the reason we're here is to kick off that dial, that discussion, consultation, to save the NIS, right? And so what we heard a while ago was a good example of a young lady who's benefited from the scheme. NIS was there when it's her turn to get. And based on what I've heard tonight, I'm sure it's my last time speaking probably. So I'll jump on the slide on the, on the screen. These four ingredients, we heard every single one of them repeatedly tonight. We heard about governance, about politicians not putting their hand in the cookie jar, taking NIS funds. We heard about weak board members, right? We heard about management not doing statements on time, right? All those things need to be fixed. We heard about systems, the registry, someone dies yesterday, the family comes in tomorrow, NIS knows in five minutes. Systems. Right, systems to allow seventy-four people to pay where they are. They go to the rum shop, they go to the store, you know, or on their phone, they can just, they had a good day, a good vendor day, a good fishing day, a good taxi day. Send a hundred dollars to NIS with no forms, no due date, just flexible, right? That is good design and systems. Good design, we talk about fifty-five and two thousand twenty-two. Let's make sure that we look at where we are today, right? What's available to us, what's important to us, and design NIS the way it should be designed today. And finally, the economy, right? Out of our hands. But I think if each of us puts our best foot forward, right? Give a fair day's work and, and, and the economy, we talk about employers and so on. Encourage people to come back home, right? Grow, grow the population, right? And attract investment. And all these four ingredients can come together for a stronger NIS.
Okay, I just want to thank everybody for coming out. I got one correction I need to make because I received a message from the F E as I was saying it. And it's that the, the nine million for the Four Seasons is to be repaid on, upon the sale of that property. So it is nine million and it's not yet in the bank. But I want to sum up first by thanking everybody who did come out, who did submit some ideas. There are a few things I think is worth reemphasizing. When the actuary has put up these options, they're options. There's no decision has been made, let me say that again, no decision has been made. These are a range of proposals that we want feedback on. I'm very glad that the, I think it was the last question from, from Shanta, she spoke. I, I thought, both in terms of fear about the future of the NIS, but also what it had done for her in the sense of responsibility that she's, she's, she's felt in paying her employees. And we have heard quite a few people say, well, I just want my money back, I wanna opt out. But we haven't heard that many people say, well, this is what NIS has actually done for me. So it's, it's an easy example, the first one, but there, there are many that are more individual and personal. But just one example in twenty twenty, the unemployment benefit that was paid out to stop people getting absolutely destroyed by the pandemic when the economy ground to a standstill. In a normal year, twenty, I think it's twenty twenty-one, excuse me, in a normal year of twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, that fund expects to pay out between forty-three and forty-nine million dollars. The next year, it paid out three times that, hundred and forty-seven million dollars. That was the NIS being what they say in their jingles, a lifeline. And that's the role it's played historically. And, and that's why when people say I wanna opt out, we ask them to recognize that for every choice is a consequence. If you want to have a society where it's every man for himself, that's what opting out will lead to. If that's the choice, we can do it that way. But this is not what, what we're recommending. So once again, thank you very much. Our view, I hope we've managed to express it adequately, is that we do have a big structural problem. I, I call it the shoes earlier, you know, our benefits have outrun our capacity to pay them. And this is the fundamental issue, but there are other very, very important issues that everyone here who spoke has raised. And, and we're looking at all of those and we're collecting the information that we can. So, so thank you very much and, and good evening.